Now I call the meeting of the Waco City Council on June 17th, 2025 to order at 3:01 PM. Welcome to the work session of the Waco City Council. Welcome to all the people gathered here in the Boski Theater Gallery here in beautiful downtown Waco. Welcome to all the viewers at home watching on the Waco City Cable Channel live and in color. Thank you all for joining us here today. I'm Mayor Holmes. I'm joined on the dais here today by our council members Isabelle Lozano from District 2, Josh Borderood from District 3, George Chase from District 5, and Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield. Darius Ewing from District 4 is not with us today. Also joined on the adjacent dais by our senior city staff Bradley Ford, our city manager, Kathleen Perdon sitting in for city attorney Hamilton Karam, and Mandy Spikes sitting in for city secretary Hicks. We'll start the meeting today with a moment of silence. Okay, and now we do have Darius Ewing from District 4 came in during the prayer because of our prayer, Darius is here today. Okay, prayers were answered.
... about by the moment of silence.
That was great. All right, we're gonna start. The first item of business today is the recognition of work session speakers, and we do have two cards here today, so I'll read the disclaimer here. And we also provide anyone who'd like to speak on a work session agenda the opportunity to do it here. We provide the opportunity for public to address the city council on any agenda item during the hearing of visitors portion of our agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium in the back to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you are speaking on behalf of a group of ten or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments, and you'll be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you are forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, their speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meetings so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the sergeant-at-arms shall remove from the council meeting any person who while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, becomes boisterous, or makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping their hands, stomping their feet, whistling, yelling, or making similar demonstrations. So we do have a couple of cards here today. Our first card is that we just have the two cards, Mandy? Okay, the first card is from Brett, Brent Weatherby, Mr. Weatherby. All right, great. You have, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
My name Brent Weatherby. I'm currently serving as the president for the Waco Professional Firefighters, and I just wanted to take time this afternoon to thank y'all for the support y'all have shown us with your, y'all have really put a lot of resources into public safety, and that's recognized by us. And also wanted to thank y'all on the appointment of Chief Ferguson at y'all's upcoming meeting at 6:00. The association fully supports him, and we'd just like to thank y'all for letting us have an internal candidate. It has been about 10 years since we've had a leader that came up through Waco, and we really appreciate that. We appreciate that consistency. I just want to speak also on how supportive city management has been. They have included us from the very beginning and have kept us in the loop the whole time. And sometimes, you know, that praise gets lost, and I just wanted to come up here and voice that in public so y'all know that we have great support, have a great working relationship, and we're just gonna plan to keep moving that forward with the appointment of Chief Ferguson, and we just want, I'd just like to thank y'all for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherby. Appreciate your comments. The next card is from Philip Burnett, Mr. Burnett. Good to have you here this afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Philip Burnett, and I am the, I was his predecessor, actually, the union president for Local 478 for about a decade, and I have all of these handouts that I'm gonna pass out about what we're gonna talk about. I'm just kidding. I want to just reiterate some things that Brent said during the last 10 years of my service with the fire department. We've had some tumultuous years, and we know we've had some turnover in the chief position, and having an internal candidate is gonna give us some consistency. So full support there. I want to reiterate how appreciative we are of city management, senior city management, and really all departments in the process as we talked about and interviewed candidates and things of that nature, and having open dialogue with what matters to us as a leader in our department. Chief Ferguson has had many successes throughout his career at the fire department. I feel like he's gonna lead us in the right way. I think there's gonna be always struggles. There's two things that firemen hate change in the way things are, and this is how it is. And so, you know, I've got a lot of, a lot of personal relationships with you guys over the last 10 years, and I appreciate your continued support for public safety. My brothers in blue over here, brothers and sisters in blue, I know that they feel the same way. So thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you have a wonderful rest of your council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Appreciate the comments. Are there any speakers registered, Mandy? None? Okay, we will, seeing no other requests to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene into work session with the report from our city manager Bradley Ford. Bradley?
Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon to everybody watching and listening. We've got a great meeting today, pretty full work session, as the council's probably noticed. I expect that those work sessions will carry us well into the 5:00 hour, or hopefully will be an executive session by 5:30. That's my goal for this afternoon. I don't have any changes to the agenda today, but I am requesting to pull two resolutions off consent for your information. That's gonna be Resolution 429, which is appointment of the fire chief, as well as Resolution 450, which is, deals with a federal grant application. On Resolution 450, it's a request to apply for a federal grant to add new firefighter positions up to 15, and I want to remove that item so that Chief Ferguson can come up in the business session at 6:00 and provide some more detail behind it. There's a budget implication to it. I think it's very important that y'all kind of hear the reasons why we're looking to apply for this grant and what it will do for the department. From an employee recognition standpoint, I've got a few, and first, I want to welcome James Harris. He's our new airport manager, actually started on the job yesterday. James, if you don't mind standing up, there he is, on the left side, middle left. James joined us, as I said, yesterday from Santa Fe Regional Airport, as well as a couple other stops in New Mexico Aviation airports. He brings more than two decades of experience, gonna be a great leader, I think, over at the airport, as well as on our, on our leadership team. He also spent time in Clovis, I'm trying to go through the list in my mind, Greenville? Maybe? Spartanburg? Who am I missing?
Greenville, South Carolina, Chimala International Airport, West Trump, Louisiana, South Bay, Maryland, and eight years in the Marine Corps as an aviation officer.
There it is, most important one there at the end. We're real excited to have James on the team and want to extend a warm welcome to you, James, and your family. Welcome. I'm supposed to insert a joke. You'll learn this about me, they, they put jokes in my comments. We're looking forward to you taking us to new heights.
They don't put that in there. They do not write that in there.
Don't dignify that.
Dad jokes are genuine.
Yeah, dad jokes galore.
Listen.
Yeah, I'm definitely excited to have James on the team. He's gonna be a great addition. I do want to also take a minute and recognize two outstanding employees who recently completed an Emerging Leaders Academy. You know, each year, council, you fund me to send two, two to four employees into a prestigious leadership development program, and we nominate those candidates, employees, through the department heads to attend the program. It's actually held at the University of Kansas in their Public Management Center, one of the best public administration programs in the country. And today, we've actually sent eight employees total through this program, investing in the growth of our future leaders. And today, I want to highlight the two recent graduates, Julie Olivera, public records specialist in the city secretary's office, as well as Nathaniel Tran, a senior applications analyst in our IT department on the recent graduation. I think they're here, if y'all don't mind standing up. Would love to applause for you. And I'd love anybody else that's been through that program that's in the audience today, wave your hands. I can't, yeah, okay, we got a couple more in the audience, too. But this is a great way for us to invest in future leaders and identify talent and grow them up through the organization. So definitely appreciate everybody that spent time in that program and your continued success at the city. Lastly, I don't want to move on, this is kind of unscheduled, and so I apologize to Melissa Thompson, Commander Thompson's out there, she's putting her head down, I see her. If you weren't aware, Commander Thompson just got back from Quantico, Virginia, and is our most recent graduate of the FBI National Academy. So Melissa, congrats on that.
Please, and thank you, we appreciate that. You gotta recognize those things, I mean, it's not, that's not small potatoes, and so we are privileged that, I mean, City of Waco is kind of on fire at advancing our, our staff and believing and so on into the staff, and, and I appreciate management, of course, and the department heads, because I know it takes a lot to manage these balls of work and, and the school programs and all of the things that your families, but it's important because it makes us a better Waco. And so I'm just peacock proud up here.
They, the team members we've highlighted, they represent you very well. In many of these cases, when they go out and go to these national academies and national trainings, they end up taking leadership roles at these academies and bringing the Waco story to the country, bringing back good ideas from others as well, but they, they should make you proud as a peacock, as a council, and they do me as well.
Absolutely, I'll just echo Mayor Pro Tem Bearfield's comments about, we are very conscious and intentional about having best-in-class employees, and you guys exemplify that and make us all proud back here in Waco. Thanks for taking that extra step above and beyond your, your, your job duty, and that just makes us all a better city and all a very proud council and a very proud management. So thank you all for, for taking that extra work.
All right, Mayor and council, we've got two informal reports on the agenda today. IR 417 is an update on our Bledsoe Miller Steam Center renovation project. We remain on track, or perhaps even steaming ahead of schedule for a December 2025 grand opening. You can find out more in the IR, but definitely excited about how that progress is occurring. And then IR 418 provides an overview of the work that goes on behind the scenes to keep our water treatment systems in shape and prepare for the high-demand months of the summer. I encourage the council and community that's watching to check out the informal report, IR 418, to learn a little bit more about what it takes to deliver reliable and safe drinking water to our public. We've got two public hearings on the agenda tonight. Galen Price is gonna cover the first one in Work Session 422 a little later, and then Clint Peters will cover the second public hearing during the business session, 6:00 session. We've got 47 resolutions on your agenda. One I mentioned earlier, 429, Resolution 429, we're gonna pull off for consent, pull off the consent agenda at 6:00. I do want to provide some kind of introductory comments on Resolution 429. I'm excited to bring this forward to the council. I know we'll spend some time at the 6:00 session talking about Robbie's background and why we're picking him as our fire chief, but I do want to just say that I'm excited to bring this forward. Robbie's spent the last 32 years in the fire service, including almost all of those, 28 of them here in Waco, and he's been a leader at each step in the process. He's been an executive deputy chief now for a couple years, been deputy chief for almost 10, I believe, and his certifications and education are just off the charts. He speaks nationally, he speaks at state level, and I'm very excited to have him step up into this chief role. I believe he'll serve this community with the same honor, honor and commitment that he's had over these last 32 years, so excited to bring that forward to you today. Resolution 434, wanted to highlight that, it's an extension of a lease for Texas Aero, Waco Regional Airport, extending their current lease from 20, ending in 2040 to actually 2065 now. Texas Aero, of course, serves as our fixed base operator, FBO, at the airport, and this lease was recently identified by staff as one that needed some modifications to accurately reflect operational realities at the airport, and also one that could significantly reduce our operating subsidy in the airport fund. And we send well over a million dollars from the general fund to the airport fund in a subsidy, and modifications to this lease that are on your agenda today will certainly bring that number down. So excited to bring that forward and appreciate staff and finance, as well as the manager's office and airport for really working hard on that. We've got Resolution 452 also.
Bradley, I just wanted to mention 433 and 434, as they fit together with airport sort of improvements. I really commend staff for being intentional about looking at the profitability of the airport, and I know we had to make some modifications on, on some, some lease agreements, and also looking at the apron there and getting grants. I just, I like the fact that we have a new director now, Harris, you'll have your hands full very quickly on this, so you have our support, unqualified support on that. So I appreciate looking at the airport and how to make that more profitable and more contributory to our, our budget.
Thanks, Mayor. My last highlight of resolutions today, I wanted to highlight Resolution 452, as well as 442 and 441 kind of together, but 452 is a request for permission to apply for a COPS Law Enforcement Mental Health Wellness Act grant for $200,000 to enhance our mental health services in the, for police employees. And then kind of related to that in Resolution 442, and it's an extension of what we call the Armor Up Program, which also provides mental health support, and 441 is our, an extension of our employee assistance program. Just wanted to highlight those as a package, because each one of them is a critical piece of the puzzle for our employees as we seek to support them with mental health services. So excited to bring each of those forward for you today. We do have six ordinances on your agenda today, all six are on second reading, gives Kathy quite a bit to read later on, looking forward to that. And Mayor and council, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions you have for me.
Any questions or comments on the agenda for this afternoon and this evening? I'll just comment right quickly on two more groups of resolutions. As you said, you kind, some of these can be bunched up, 437 through 442, for instance, are the, the insurance that we provide our employees and how we are being very thoughtful about expanding that care. And there's a nice write-up on page four, or 233, that says not only our 1,400 employees, but it's actually 3,000 family members that we are covering in our, in our health insurance. And that health insurance goes obviously to health, dental, life, and we're being more intentional, as city manager Ford said, about mental wellness support, and, and both in those resolutions and the, the police resolution that you were referring to, Bradley. But I, I just like where we're moving on, on getting that broader coverage. It's not inexpensive, but it's worth every penny that we provide our employees, the most important asset that we've got in the city. Another little group that I want to talk about is, or just comment on, 443, 444, 445, about, and all of them have kind of indirectly, indirectly have to do with housing, and all the different ways that the city is looking to contribute to the solution of our, our housing issues here. The first one being a, a grant from ARP to, to address a lovely, the lovely village. The second one, Creekside Community Village for the Unhoused. The next one, Page Estates, is a small contribution, or half a million dollars, depending on how you look at that, a major contribution to a giant project. We're also talking about a, we had the Cypress Village last week that we, some of us went to the ribbon cutting there. We've got Riverway going, we've got Floyd Casey going, there's a lot of housing issues that are very active, and we're actively addressing the issue here in Waco, so I'm happy to see all this intentional movement on, on housing.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, forgive me for speaking after you, it's not just one person's responsibility, and what I appreciate in this bundle, as you mentioned, is that there's so many different organizations who publicly, privately, nonprofit, for-profit, are walking in lockstep with the City of Waco to solve our housing crisis. It's not gonna be solved overnight. The packages that they come in will be different for different reasons and different residents, which is all necessary, and I appreciate being able to walk in lockstep with these organizations as we try to better our community.
Great. Any other comments or questions on the resolutions? Again, we'll, we'll celebrate 429 and 450 tonight, Robbie, so we won't say anything this afternoon. Bradley, are you complete over there? Good. The consent agenda, we'll move on to that, includes Resolutions 2025-429 through Resolution 2025-475. Are there any other items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda includes Resolutions 2025-429 through Resolution 2025-475, except for 2025, 429, 432, 450, 457, and 464. The next item on my agenda is work session items 2025-419 through 2025-423. City manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, Mayor, our first work session is Work Session 419, discussion of the FY 25-26 Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. I'm gonna invite Blue Costlet, our assistant city manager/CFO, as well as Colin Booth, our managing director of finance. Is Colin up here? Is he working his way up? Did Colin give up on you?
Looks like I saw him.
Oh, there he is, right in front of us. We had a really productive budget retreat just recently, about 10 days ago with the council, and Blue and Colin are gonna work through some outcomes of the retreat and the feedback we received, as well as continue to lay the groundwork towards a filed budget here in the next few weeks. Blue?
Yes, thank you, city manager. Mayor, council, good to be with you. We did, like the city manager said, we had a great time on Friday, June 6th with you, a lot, a lot of good input, so thank you very much for your time that you gave us to help us shape this, this budget for the next fiscal year. So as we are looking at what we're doing today, kind of a review and a discussion of those priority items that came out of the, the June 6 budget retreat, so as we go forward, we can, like I said, continue to shape this, this budget into what fits your strategic objectives for the City of Waco. So we did want to go back through the, the forecast models. We, we had some cleanups to do and added in some, some capital projects, and some of those didn't, didn't show up in the first model, so we're gonna clean those up. There were some questions on the debt profile, we'll clarify those, and then go into the results of that maintenance and operations exercise that we, we had you complete. So looking first at the, at the models, the, the general fund model did not change from what you, what you saw earlier, so still at that planning on the revenue of 209.5 million dollars up from what we project this year at 205.4 million. On the expense side, looking at 204 million, as opposed to our actual budget right now of 205, looking like we're finishing the, the fiscal year '25 at 203.5 million dollars. So still $5 million in the surplus on planning for fiscal year '26. And we did talk a lot about the efficiency efforts that the, the city went through. That was a, that was a huge initiative that we took to make sure that we were operating in, in the most efficient manner possible, so we, we challenged our directors to, to go through their budgets, think about what services they were providing and how they were providing those services, and how we could accomplish our mission and our, our objectives in a more efficient manner. So some of those recurring efficiencies, as you saw, so as we walk on the expense side, going from fiscal year '25 to the planned fiscal year '26, looking at those first, those recurring efficiencies, bringing us down by almost 11.6 million dollars in the general fund alone, that's a, that was no small feat, but these, these directors came to the table, they scrutinized their, their operations, and this is what we believe that we can still move forward within our operations by cutting out these costs. As you walk forward, we still have our civil service obligations for the third year of, of the meet and confer and the collective bargaining agreement, so those are, those are already going into, to the base budget. And then you have the standard health insurance, the, the 3.5% COLA for the City of Waco non-civil service employees, and then just everything benefits related that are tied to those employee increases. So all that gets you from where you were at the fiscal year '25 budget of 205.2 million up to the fiscal year '26 expenses of 204.4 million. On Friday, we did say that, and we, we talked about leaving and for our planning purposes, planning at the 75.5 cent tax rate, that is what we have today, but there is a little bit of a shift between maintenance and operations and INS. So looking at our tax rate over the last few years, the last 10 years, we've, we've really kept a pretty stable tax rate here at the City of Waco. However, you're gonna see that shift between maintenance and operations and the interest in sinking, which is, the interest in sinking is what goes first and foremost to pay for your debt obligations. So we've gone from about an 85-15 ratio to that 80% maintenance and operations and 20% debt ratio. At the retreat, we were asked how that compares to our peer cities, and we, we went back through the, the most recent audit of financials to, to look at our peer cities compared to Waco. You see Waco on the far left at that 80, almost 80-20 split, and then you look at the 10 peer cities that we look at, and you look at the O and M percentages and the debt percentages, and the average without Waco, the average is 65% maintenance and operations, 35% on the, the INS or debt side, and that really aligns very much with the median as well at that 67-33. So at our 80-20, we are still putting way more into maintenance and operations and less into debt than what our 10 peer cities are, and you can see how those split between the individual, individual cities.
Blue, thanks for putting this together. It's one, one of the things I do, I appreciate your responsiveness, because we just asked this, the last one, I guess, on Friday, a week ago, but anyway, pulling this together, it's interesting to me to see the groupings here that, and the way I think about it, Round Rock Temple, Georgetown Denton, kind of the I-35 cities that are really kind of corridor competitors are all carrying quite a bit more debt than, than we are comparatively speaking. If you, if you pulled out those four, I think it would be somewhere around, you know, about probably 40% or 60-40 split?
It would be more closer to that 60-40 split, Mayor, you're, you're exactly right. The, the ones that are on, on par with Waco, Abilene, Amarillo, Lubbock, Midland, you, you think about those, and they are very isolated cities, very, very insulated into what they're doing, at varying degrees of their total maintenance and operations, the variance in how their, their property taxes come in, but overall, yes, those four are kind of unique compared to the more I-35 corridor, the, the Texas Triangle.
Just the demands of growth are more.
Demands are very different.
So for us to kind of directionally move away from the 85 towards the 80 is logical just to kind of keep up with, with what the competition is telling us. Anyway, great, great slide.
All right, moving into the water fund, again, these are, these are gonna be a little bit different than what you saw earlier on, on Friday at the budget retreat. We did go through, we, we scrubbed the, the rate models that come from our, our consultants to make sure that those were accurate. We, we have gone through, revised some of the, the total revenues based upon what was coming through, based upon the new estimates for usage, and then we also did go through and scrub our expenditures, including the, the anticipated COLAs, along with a lot of the new projects, that a lot of the new projects were not included in the rate models, so we've gone ahead and put those in so that we can get a, a much more accurate depiction of what we are doing over the next few years, and you see that total revenues are, are over the expenditures for, for the out years. By that 8.5 million mark in fiscal year '26, a lot of that being because of the, the efficiency efforts. We were able to pull out, out a lot of, of one time, but also some, some recurring expenses from fiscal year '26, and then that carrying through, through fiscal '27 through fiscal '30. But that also goes along with, you know, when you're looking at these utility funds, you always have to pay attention to not only your reserve policy, but... funds, you always have to pay attention to not only your reserve policy, but, uh, because we have, uh, debt issue that is rate-supported, uh, by the operations of these funds, we have to look at those and, and align ourselves with the debt service coverage, uh, to make sure that we are, uh, suffici- sufficiently leveraged, uh, and, and bringing enough revenue in to, to make sure that we cover, um, all of our debt service. So, you're going to see on that bottom, uh, bold line, the debt service coverage that we're, we're looking for, for a healthy utility is around that one point two, one point two-five, uh, times coverage. Uh, and you see we're starting to hover, uh, fiscal year twenty-six, and we're, it's going to be about that one point four. Uh, we are going to reduce down to that one point two-five, one point, one point two, a little bit down. It's going to hover, but we are, uh, shooting for that one point two-five times coverage. On the actual water rates themselves, uh, this is what has been programmed in. There's been no change to this plan, uh, from what you've seen in the past. Uh, you can see on the, the base charges, uh, for all the different size meters, uh, we are not recommending any change, uh, to those, but we are changing, or recommending changing, uh, the, the volumetric rates, uh, as we get, uh, around some of the new, um, improvements that we're making to these, tho- those are expensive and they are volumetric-driven, so, uh, that is the side, that is the direction that the city is, is recommending going forward with, is increasing the volumetric, uh, rates. Moving to water, wastewater fund, uh, again, uh, just scrubbing this, uh, we did, because of the way the rate model works, we did have to combine, uh, the wa- the wastewater and the WMARS, uh, model into one, uh, so that we can get a much more accurate depiction of what's actually happening there. So, fiscal year twenty-six, uh, because some of the improvements that are being, being made, uh, we're looking at a surplus of almost that, uh, half a million dollar mark, uh, and then fiscal twenty-seven through thirty, uh, still having a surplus of four point one, up to, to five point, uh, seven-five million, five point seven-six million dollars. Uh, so still looking at some, some projects in, in the water and the wastewater fund. Moving forward into, uh, our reserve policy, again, at that twenty-five percent, uh, of revenues, uh, but then the debt service coverage, when you're looking at the, the wastewater side, uh, looking again at that one point, uh, two-five times coverage, uh, in fiscal year twenty-six, we, we expect to be around that one point one, but then, uh, jumping up closer to that one point two, one point two-five times coverage, uh, that we're, we're really shooting for. On the residential wastewater, uh, rates, again, uh, because of the improvements that have been made, uh, especially related to, uh, the, the improvements and the, the debt that's already been issued for Bullhide, uh, we are looking at the, the gradual increase in, in the, uh, base charges and on the volumetric charges. Uh, so you can see that, the recommendation is, uh, is five point four point, five point four percent increase, uh, for the base charge and five point three, uh, percent on the volumetric charge for wastewater rates. Moving on to the solid waste fund, uh, in fiscal year, uh, twenty-five, we did have a, that one-time payment, that's why you're going to see, uh, the, the expenditures, uh, over, uh, the revenues by that, uh, what we're expecting around that three million dollar mark for this year. So, uh, pulling into reserves by about that three million for that one-time expense, uh, that reverses out in, in future years, and in fiscal year twenty-six, uh, looking at that, uh, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, dollar, uh, surplus, uh, moving up, but, but again, in the, in the out years, we are looking, uh, at a, a deficit in the model just the way it's going right now, so, uh, that is something that we are going to have to pay attention to and, uh, and look, look to correct for the future, to make sure that we're, we're on, on target and, and, and planning for this. Uh, on that debt service coverage ratio, uh, still below that one right there, uh, and, and staying below one. So, uh, do have some work to do in the solid waste fund, but that's something that we will, we will get together as a city management group and, uh, we'll come up with an approach on, on, uh, the solid waste fund.
Blue, on that, you have excess reserves there though, too, right? Because doesn't some of that work against the, the shortfall, or is that included in it?
That doesn't really count against you on the debt service coverage.
Okay. Okay.
Because that, that coverage is, is, is available, is a fund available for debt service.
Got it.
The projected, uh, the rates that we are, uh, anticipating and, and recommending to, uh, city council, increasing by that seven percent, uh, on the monthly rate, seven percent for an additional cart fee for the solid waste. Moving on, Mayor Council, to the, uh, debt profile. Uh, the, the question was asked, uh, where we are on the principal basis. Uh, we, we show principal and interest on this slide, uh, but we, we have backed out the interest portion of that, and you can see how we have ramped up to, to take care of, uh, some of the deferred, uh, projects that we've had out there, some of the improvements that we've needed to make in our systems. Uh, so, uh, you, you see the ramp up from fiscal year twenty up to where we are in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, most of that being on the water and the wastewater side. So, big, big investments in that. Uh, we have started putting money into, to our TIF-supported projects, uh, so that, that's where you're going to see that top purple, uh, line, but also some of the, the just general debt, and that general debt really being a lot with your roads and your bridges, your core infrastructure. So, uh, you can see the investments that, that the city has been making. And now, as you're looking out further year, in, in the future years, again, keep in mind, Council, this is as a, this is a snapshot as of today, so this does not include any projected future issuances, this is just where we are, uh, right now. So, we do always, uh, look at this on a couple of metrics to, to compare, again, those ten peer cities, uh, that we've been looking at, uh, and what we're doing as a debt per capita, uh, basis, uh, for, for our peer comparison. And you see on the left, uh, Waco being in the blue, the, our comparable cities being in the purple bars, that, that's the average of our, of our comparable cities. Uh, so in fiscal year twenty-four on the audit of financials, and this is just our true governmental debt, so this is not including any of the special utility debt, or, uh, if, if some of those cities, our peer cities have electric systems, that's pulling all of this out so that we're just comparing, uh, the, the essential general governmental core services, uh, on a peer-to-peer basis. Uh, so Waco is sitting at, uh, just under twenty-one hundred dollars, uh, per capita, where our peers are sitting, uh, right around two thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars per capita, and you can see how that varies from, from each individual, in each individual city on the chart on the right.
Again, those same four, right? The same four I thirty-five cities are all carrying a little bit more debt per, uh, per capita than we are. Interesting. I like to break out.
All right, and then also a, a debt per taxable value, so again, general governmental debt, uh, as compared to the taxable value of the city as a, as a whole, because you think of this as, you know, these are investments that we're making into the infrastructure, uh, what's the, what is the value that's, that's bringing to the entire region, and how is that working with the, the taxable values, uh, from, from the city as a whole? What are we supporting? Uh, so Waco is right at that one point six percent, uh, compared to our peers at, at just over two percent. Right on the right again, debt to taxable, uh, assessed value in twenty twenty-four according to their, uh, audit of financials. And finally, Mayor Council, we're going to go into a little bit of the, the operating and maintenance results, uh, from the exercise that we gave you. You know, we, we gave a, a hypothetical ten million dollars to all the council members and said, you know, if we, if we have a surplus, and that surplus just happened to be ten million dollars, we just made it a, an even dollar. Here are all of the projects that had been requested in our, in our budget, and we gave you kind of an explanation of, of each one of those, and what it was doing for the city as a whole, and why those were being requested. So, we had you, uh, divvy up your, your funds, your ten million dollars between, uh, these different projects, and what we found was, uh, we, we looked at them in two different ways. One, how many council members, there were five present, how many council members actually put any money whatsoever, invested in that one item? And then, to the level of how much money was available for that, what percentage of the money went towards those projects? So, you can see that, that first, uh, rank, the top three, uh, got a hundred percent funding from all five council members, that was IT, cybersecurity, a, a facilities quality assurance and quality control analyst, and IT GIS analyst. Uh, ranks four through seven, all five members, uh, all five council members put money down on those projects, uh, but maybe didn't fund them to the full level that was requested. So, out of those, IT core infrastructure was funded up to a ninety-five percent of what was available. The, uh, pavilion garage maintenance, eighty percent, neighborhood streets, seventy-six percent, and equipment replacement as a whole, uh, was seventy-five percent. Moving into the, the next tier, um, we had at least four council members, uh, put, put any of their funds down on these and funded them at one hundred percent, so we can go through that entire list. Rank sixteen through twenty-one, uh, three, two, four, uh, put money down, uh, but either, uh, if there was that four, did not, did not fund it to the full one hundred percent. Uh, the reserve and allocation, three members kept, uh, monies back, uh, for, for reserves, uh, that came out to about three point five million dollars. Uh, the rest of those new vehicles, building controls, IT, and heavy rescue, rescue staffing were either by three at a hundred percent, or on that heavy rescue, uh, three down to eighty-two percent of the, the total request. And then the, the, the lowest tiers, uh, ranked twenty-two through twenty-four, uh, two members put down for the, the aid additional firefighters, uh, two, uh, did the COLA option one, which was the thirty percent retroactive, uh, you know, I understand right now, we are in a, we are offering a thirty percent non-retroactive, uh, COLA option for our retirees. Option one was just to make that retro instead of non-retro. TMAS COLA option two was moving to a fifty percent non-retroactive, uh, plan. So, that was one council member, and, and funding that one hundred percent. Mayor Council, I want to pause here, uh, on the operating exercise, because this is the first I know that you're, you're seeing this, uh, and, and want to get your feedback. Does this meet your intent? Is this, i- is this in alignment with what you were trying to get? And I'll go back to the top.
Any comments, guys? I, I will say, uh, before the, this was, and somebody's had dollar amounts attached to him, two things I'll say about it. First of all, after a day-long, uh, off-site, this was the last thing that we were doing, we're all trying to get out. Okay. Uh, the second thing, somebody's had dollar amounts assigned to them that were super high, and so maybe some of us said, well, we can't afford that, so we pushed that down. But I don't want anybody to feel slighted in here if they finished in, you know, whatever. Uh, eight firefighters, I want eight, eight more firefighters, but just because it ranked there, I think I'd, there was something else about it, but, uh, I, I just want to qualify the comments. It was a good exercise, as you say, kind of relative, but to me, like, to make it a deeper exercise, you'd have given me ten years to spend that ten million, and I'll, I'll, I'll make it all fit somehow, but.
You're exactly right, Mayor, and thank you for that clarification. I should have mentioned that, it wasn't a, a hard no, uh, on the comments that we got back from, from city council, it was, all right, well, I, I understand what they're trying to do, and maybe we could, we could delay that one year, or we could, uh, look at doing something else. So, this wasn't a hard no, this wasn't a, this is not needed, this was a, a simple resource allocation for right now.
It, it was worthwhile. Guys?
I enjoyed the exercise. This seems consistent with what I was seeing out there and my input, so, I, I'm content with it. But, yeah, with the mayor's qualification, it had a lot more specificity and context that we don't have the time to go into today was given about each of these items.
Any other comments or insight?
About forty people? I mean, forty item, it was a.
Yeah, the other.
It was about, you know, several, several different items that we were, you know, trying to rank and prioritize in this additional ten million dollars. Um, I think that, you know, protecting our assets as a whole, I think is prioritized, it's, it, you know, it's all fun and games until the cybersecurity goes down and your, all your department funds are held at ransom. Um, but I, I, I echo the mayor in that it, it was probably one of the most difficult exercises I've ever done, because it's all important. And the issue is that we don't have that money for everybody and everything, so we have to figure out what the best, um, allocations go to for this year, and that's the whole point of this exercise, is it's one budget year.
Yes.
We're looking at what we have, not how we consider it and, and it, the department specificity. Um, it was a challenge to do, but I, this, it reflects what I thought was a priority, so. But very difficult to do.
Thank you, Mayor. I think maybe a more telling sign of the times, and, and I know that we're not, we are not in dire straits as, as, uh, I, I can see the next slide before we get there, don't, don't worry about advancing to it yet, but, you know, I, I'm sure you'll, uh, talk about that in conclusion, but, uh, a more telling sign of the times is that even hypothetically, we just get ten million dollars to play with.
Right.
You know? Couldn't jack that number up a little bit to, to spread it around, just in the hypothetical, we had to cap it at a very reasonable ten million dollar surplus, uh, just to, to kind of set expectations for, um, the, the budget that we're working with and, and the way that we want to be funding these things, um, knowing that everyone's eating out of the same pie here, uh, and, and we're striving to continue, um, delivering really, really high-class services, uh, on top of, uh, taking care of our employees, but, um, I think that having this here, having this in the presentation is really helpful for people to be able to see kind of, um, where our priorities are, even if in this fiscal year, um, our dollars can't necessarily be one-to-one with our priorities, because we have to keep the lights on and make sure that we're still providing high-quality services.
Any other comments? Uh, I do see, uh, IT Director Mike Seiright back there. You got to feel pretty good about this one, though. Three out of the top four concerns were IT-related. Um, okay, I think we'll all be thinking about it over the, until our next council meeting on how that works, but, yeah, great exercise, Blue.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for all your, your comments on this, and, uh, for, for helping us through this. So, the, the property tax, again, what we're planning and what we're, we're going to continue going forward, uh, with in our, in our plan, and what we're going to present to you, uh, later in August, uh, that property tax rate right now is remaining stable at that seventy-five and a half percent, or seventy, seventy-five point five cents, uh, per hundred-dollar valuation, so we will continue to plan for that. Uh, general fund, again, showing that positive trajectory, five-year forecast, uh, still coming in, uh, strong slight deficit out in the, the fiscal year thirty that we're going to have to pay attention to, but, you know, what we really, uh, highlighted and focused on, even though we are showing positive, you know, two of our biggest, uh, gainers in, in that general fund were your sales tax and your interest earnings, and those are two of the most volatile, um, revenue sources for the general fund, uh, because if there is a turn in the economy, uh, both of those can, can drop, uh, very, very rapidly on you. So, that is something that we're, we're good with right now in, in the planning, uh, how we feel about the economy going forward and what we've seen through, uh, some of the, the similar situations in the past. However, it's something that we're going to have to be extremely careful about going forward. Uh, utility rate increases, uh, again, those, those slide increases in the, uh, the utility rates, volumetric on the water, the wastewater, uh, some of the solid waste going up, uh, based upon the debt issuances that we've had, uh, along for, along with the, the infrastructure improvements that have been made. Uh, debt management strategy, uh, again, what we're trying to do is, is stay below our peers, but also kind of start leveling that off, uh, figuring out what, uh, going forward is, is that level that we can, uh, adequately maintain, uh, so that we can balance our maintenance and operations and our interest in sinking grades. Uh, and then again, as we just talked about with the budget retreat priorities, you know, thank you very much, this, this really is just a, a resource allocation planning for us to, to help understand, help us understand if we have a surplus and we have funds available, kind of what are the council's, um, list of priorities, what, what should we be looking at to, uh, to go forward with and fund in the, the upcoming fiscal year? How do we manage that for the next, um, not just the next year, but the next five years? And what do we get after? So, thank you very much for your time on that. Mayor Council, I'll pause for any other questions.
Any questions or comments for, for Blue and Colin?
Yep, Blue and Colin, thank you very much for this. Um, going back on that debt per capita, so, I'm understanding this correctly, the, the figure we're using, does that take out water and wastewater and solid waste?
It does take out.
Just general debt?
That is just the general governmental debt.
Okay. Do you, would you guess, is our, how does our debt for water and wastewater, if we factored that in, how would those compare with peer cities? I'm not, I mean to.
Yeah, Mr. Chase, that's going to be, uh, we, we can, we can do that, we can look at that one as a whole. Um, I, I'm guessing that we would probably be in line, if not slightly higher, uh, just because of the, the regional nature of our water system, versus some of the others are very specific, uh, in how they get their water, uh, if it's through an authority, there, there's just so many variables when you go on the, the utility side, that, uh, it's not always a, a true one-to-one comparison. that it's not always a, a true one-to-one comparison.
And then on our solid waste, this may not be, would there be any value in comparing those rates to other cities? Or is that just something where there's so many variables that it would be meaningless?
We, we can, we can easily do the comparison for other cities. I think there is some value to it. A lot of times, or some of these cities I know are going to have privatized.
Yeah.
Solid waste services. So it may not be act, like truly accurate when you're coming to that, but we can, we can definitely do that and, and get a pair comparison.
Thanks.
Along those lines, City Manager Ford, I know we periodically do rate comp analysis. I can't remember the last one that we've done, but evidently not since George has been on, relative to the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, periodically we do that very thing, George, or Councilmember Chase.
We can circulate each of the most recent rate studies in solid waste, wastewater and water. They're relatively recent and that'll be, be a helpful document. I'll, I'll circulate to the whole council. That way, everybody can get refreshed on it. I do think on, to, to Blue's point, I think was well-made. And I, and we just got back from D C and so I've got my stump speech that I just gave to members of Congress and all the, all sorts of others. But on the utility fee side, recall that we've loaded up a hundred and fifty million dollars of expenses relative to upstream dairy costs that other communities have not had to bear. And that has had a definite significant rate impact. So as we read those studies and look at those things, recognize that the Waco ratepayer businesses and residents have had to carry a hundred and fifty million dollars of costs that other communities haven't.
Those, yeah, those studies are, are very enlightening and any other questions for the team?
Again, in line with what George was saying about not wanting to do it just for the exercise, one thing that I think would be interesting to see at some point would be the debt per taxable value comparison, not necessarily with peer cities, but just for the city of Waco in terms of where our highest taxable value is and then what projects we are funding with, with our debt. And if, you know, sort of are we funding everything on the periphery? Are things being funded in and around the core of the city? And does that line up with where our taxable value is? So again, not necessarily in line with, with the exercise of comparing to peer cities, but certainly something I'd be interested in seeing in terms of kind of how we're generating, what we're leveraging for this debt versus where we're spending it.
That is noted and we will, we will.
Yeah.
See how we can get at it.
Not a definitive marching order, just, I think it'll be, it'd be interesting to see at some point.
Okay. Mayor Proton? Nothing on this one. The, well, I appreciate the deliberate review that you guys are, are doing on this. Blue and Colin, great job on reviewing the various ones. These are the big ones, right? The water, wastewater, solid waste, and then everything kind of drops off after that, I guess. Stormwater and street would be next. We'll look at that after the summer. Just going to that, this page that's up, the, the fact that we do want to keep, we don't want to raise the tax rate if we can, if we can as we get through this budget process, it's sort of a mandate to keep it where it is or to lower it. And I don't think we can lower it this year by any means, so we, but we don't want to raise it either. General fund showing positive trajectory, that's, that's good news. I think we're being reasonable and I think let's, we'll look at that rate study, Councilmember Chase, and also get that before the next meeting too, so we're all sort of on board with that. And I, and I, that next bullet point, I really appreciate the extra diligence that we're doing on this debt management and capacity. And it, it makes me feel better about where we're at, that, that we analyze our coverage ratios and, and the fact that we do see some debt going up. But we're investing in ourselves and we're making sure we have the long-term assets in place. But it, it just, it's been a great presentation here all the way through and everything you put together, both Colin and you, Blue. I appreciate your attention to detail on this.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good, good O M B team.
That is that. Thanks again, Blue and Colin and City Manager Ford. We will now move on to work session twenty-two-five dash four-two-zero.
Yes, sir. We've got Chris Collins, our Executive Vice President of Economic Development for the Greater Waco Chamber, joining us this afternoon to present on the proposed economic development agreement and program project agreement with Graphic Packaging that's on your agenda today. Council will recall that G P I, as we call it, is Waco's first one billion with a B, cap, billion-dollar capital investment. Chris will walk us through the project overview, the anticipated economic impact and benefits for the region, as well as the structure of the economic incentives and returns. One other thing I want to, want to say before she, we'll hand the mic over to her is, you know, you're going to see pictures of the construction here in a minute. And if, if you've been around town and seen, seen the cranes, I just want to call out some folks behind the scenes, particularly Clint Peters team in Development Services, as well as the Fire Marshal's Office, our Infrastructure Services Department. There's some real champions that have supported Graphic Packaging's very aggressive construction schedule. And they've done it very well. And just want to say thanks to the team that's delivered on behalf of the city. So Chris, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager Ford. Mayor Council, it's a pleasure to be here and thank you for having me. I wanted to give you an update on where we are. So my presentation this afternoon will be focused on Graphic Packaging International's economic impact, the significance of some of the infrastructure improvements that are underway and to support this project, the community financial support in support of this economic development endeavor. And then where is Graphic Packaging now and what's on the horizon for them for operations? So looking at the, the stats, and just as a reminder, this is a billion-dollar investment. And they'll create at least a hundred and ninety direct jobs with an average annual wage of sixty-five thousand dollars a year, plus health insurance benefits and a number of other benefits, retirement and whatnot. They're going on to, they're nearing completion of six hundred and twenty thousand square feet on a hundred and twenty-five acres that's located in Texas Central Park. And looking at the twenty-year economic impact, this is projected to create over three hundred and seventy-eight direct and indirect jobs, more than four hundred and, excuse me, five hundred million dollars indirect and indirect payroll, almost three hundred million dollars in new taxes generated across McLennan County. So that's city, county, school district and community college combined. And then looking at our new taxable sales in Waco, there's over a hundred and forty million dollars worth of new taxable sales, so sales taxes that would be generated through, through that. And G P I has done some economic impact analysis and they estimate that they're, during the construction phase alone, that they're generating more than five hundred million dollars worth of economic impact in the community. If you have been in a grocery store or convenience store, anywhere, where around town around five o'clock, you see those construction guys in their bright yellow shirts driving all over and, and using local services. So, so they, they definitely are. And I will tell you that at peak construction, they had more than two thousand workers onsite at, at time. And so that's, that's a large amount of economic impact that's being generated in the community. So large projects like this don't happen by themselves and it takes a lot of support that comes along with it. And so, City Manager Ford, thank you for, for recognizing your staff for that because they have been instrumental in getting this thing across the finish line in a lot of different ways. There are infrastructure improvements that have to go along with this, both within the industrial park and then offsite to be able to support the project. And so there are two main, main projects that we've been focused on. One that's underway right now is at American Plaza. So if you know where the Owens Lane Water Tower is, there's improvements happening around Richland Mall that will connect into other infrastructure improvements. And then looking within the industrial park itself, though, those improvements offsite are being pushed, will help push infrastructure improvement support within the park itself. So new water lines, new sewer lines as well. And then this is a really good one to look at. So there's a brand-new road that's been constructed. It's nearing completion, Sheehy Parkway. And with that, those water and sewer lines will also be, will also lead to new electric, new gas. So everything that you need to support a project is being constructed in order to, to bring this to fruition. But it's not just to support Graphic Packaging. The idea with this and the reason that this has been important is because it opens the door for additional capacity within the industrial park to support other businesses, both existing and new. And in fact, Electrolit being located right next to Graphic Packaging is directly benefiting from these infrastructure improvements. So that's, that is a direct result. But for these improvements, Electrolit would not have been able to locate on that site and that project will be another four hundred million dollars worth of investment coming into the community. So looking at the community financial support, we did go through a T E R S expansion a few years ago. And with that, the industrial, several sites within the industrial park were added into T E R S number four. G P I's four hundred and ninety million dollars worth of taxable real property investment, which is our estimated taxable investment value, is going to generate about ninety-six million dollars worth of new T E R S funds into T E R S number four. With that, both the city and the county contribute seventy percent of the new increment into the fund and M C C contributes at a fifty percent rate. And that's where you get that ninety-six million dollars over twenty years. There are a number of different projects, both at the city, the county and state, that we've identified in support of this project. The two that y'all will discuss tonight will be the Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation grant and then support through the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, the T I F. Both of those are three-party agreements between the city or the city and the county, along with the company and the Waco Industrial Foundation. But this is just an overview for you to see the level of support that the community's putting on the table as a whole to, to help make this process and this project come to, to light. So you have fee waivers through the impact fees and you have tax, excuse me, Texas Enterprise Zone project nomination. They may or may not pursue that one. And then there are utility improvements offsite in addition to the ones happening in Texas Central Park. So looking at the Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation, and as a reminder, this is a, this is a partnership between the city of Waco and McLennan County to provide cash incentives into economic development projects. There are job requirements, investment requirements to go along with this. And the city and the county participate in equal partnership in their supportive projects. This particular agreement I mentioned before is a three-party agreement between the E D C, G P I and the Industrial Foundation. The total grant award that's been recommended is eight point six million dollars in support of the project. That would be divided between the two parties. Graphic Packaging receiving approximately four point three million dollars to assist with the construction of a rail spur and a traffic signal at the intersection of Sheehy Parkway and Bagby Avenue. And then a four point three million dollar allocation to the Industrial Foundation to reimburse them for the construction of a natural gas infrastructure in support of the project. These both would be contingent upon completion of the projects before any disbursement of payments would be allowed. We always want to make sure that the dollars that we're investing in economic development are providing a strong return on investment to, to the community. So looking at this, between the city and the county, there's a combined twenty-six point eight percent annual return on investment and an, a payback of four point five years. Looking specifically at the city of Waco, you're looking at thirty-five and point seven percent and three point five years. So very strong return on investment back into, back to the community for this. Are there any questions about the, the E D C grant?
No.
So the other agreement that you'll consider tonight is, is the T I F incentive overview, T I F agreement. Again, this is a three-party agreement between the city of Waco, the Industrial Foundation and Graphic Packaging. The, the T I F Board has reviewed this and provided a recommendation in support of, of, of the agreement. And G P I would receive a share of incremental property taxes that it generates above a threshold of three point eight six million dollars. And that estimated grant value over a twenty-year period is about fifteen point six million dollars. I'm taking a step back with this. This, this agreement is unusual and these agreements coming to you this late in the process are a little, is not our standard, standard operating procedure. We hit a couple of, of roadblocks along, along the way. And one of those was how the property will be valued and in what structure. Typically, equipment is looked at as business personal property. But because of the structure in which, and the way in which it is affixed to the ground in this particular site, it's going to be viewed as a real property. And what that did was it changed the way in which we have to structure these incentive agreements. You would have originally received a business grant agreement and you would have had an Economic Development Corporation grant and we would have called it a day. This is a little bit different, so we had to run it through the, the T I F. And so the, the dollars from the T I F are being utilized to, that are generated by Graphic Packaging are being utilized to help offset debt service costs. Those infrastructure improvements have, have an expense associated with them. And with that, you want to make sure that the taxes generated within the T I F are going to pay that debt service. So you have a minimum threshold within the agreement of three point eight six million dollars to cover the debt service. And then any additional increment generated by Graphic above that would be eligible for that reimbursement to, to the company. So during the first ten years, if there's increment above the three point eight six million, Graphic would be eligible to receive ninety percent of that difference. And in years eleven through twenty, it would be fifty percent of that difference. There's also, we want to make sure that, that we're not putting the community in any kind of risk related to that debt service. There is a hold harmless term in, within the agreement that basically says if the, the dollars generated within the T I F by Graphic falls below that three point eight six million, that Graphic is responsible for paying the difference between that, what they generated and the three point eight six. And then there is a, an opportunity that with this infrastructure, we, we want others to be able to utilize it. And with that, there's a, an opportunity for there to be a decrease in, annually in Graphics' contribution or required contribution towards the three point eight six million. So for every five million dollars, fifty million dollars of new increment generated within T I F number four within a very specified area, and I'll show you a map of what that looks like, Graphic would be eligible for a five percent reduction off of the three point eight six million. One of the other terms of the agreement is that the city will purchase the infrastructure improvements that the Waco Industrial Foundation is, is building out in an amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars. And that would exclude that natural gas infrastructure that's part of the Economic Development Corporation agreement. So when we talk about what that reduction eligible area is, it is again, a very defined area within T I F number four. The areas in the dark blue are the, the specified areas that would be eligible. Graphics' site is the light blue area. And then if you'll notice to the south, that would include Electrolit's new site and then some other properties that are available for development. And again, this is the first time that the city has provided a reduction option in an incentive agreement. So this is a, a big moment for us. It's not to become, that we want to make it the standard, but it is something that, that has helped us both in making this possible for, for Graphic, but also that it's, it's an added benefit that we can, that we can all benefit from. So looking over at, overall at the return on investment to the community, again, the economic development incentive has a three-point-five-year payback for the city. And then within years twenty-twenty-seven through twenty-forty-six, the twenty years, the first twenty years of Graphics' presence within the community, it's estimated that it's going to generate at least twenty-nine million dollars in new revenue for the city, twenty-five million of that. 25 million of that would be direct real property taxes after the TERS allocation and then an estimated $4 million in new personal property and inventory taxes. So 70% of the taxes generated by Graphic go into, on the real property go into the TIF and then 30% of it is, is dedicated to the city and to, into the county for general fund property tax revenues. And then all of the personal property that's generated through taxable inventories and taxable business personal property are also, 100% of that goes to the city and the county. So looking at where Graphic is now, they're actually ahead of schedule for their, their, to become operational. They were anticipating being ready to go in February of 2026. That looks closer to October 2025 and that's actually really beneficial to us because if it becomes operational before the end of the year, that means it goes on the tax rolls sooner too. That's, that's a benefit for everyone. Hiring continues and the company is approaching full employment. They are actually utilizing the work site within Texas Central Park for training and the partnership that they've created with TSTC for that ramping up as a model that TSTC is utilizing with other businesses. So thank y'all for your support for the work site because it really is paying dividends into the community. And one update from when I submitted these slides is that $70 million has actually been spent with local contractors and suppliers instead of 50%. There's been, and so that's, that's great. We know that they are utilizing the services and the, and manufacturing expertise of local businesses and that's exactly what we want in these projects. To date, the water, the sewer, the natural gas and the electric infrastructure improvements are completed. The rail work is underway. There's a traffic signal that is nearing completion at Sheehy Parkway and Bagby and that should be fully signalized in July and then there are sidewalks and lighting that will be finished out by October 2025. Sheehy Parkway should be open in July. Hopefully, the rain is delaying us a little bit there, but rain is always good too, so it's a, it's a, we'll, we'll take it. But this is a great view to be able to see what the site looks like and both for Graphic and for Electrolyte and you can see on the graphic site how many vehicles are there. So there, I mean, there's just a tremendous amount of work that's being done and even after they're operational, there, there will be work that will continue on for the near future. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have about any of the programs or anything else that I can answer for you.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Collins?
I have one. Thank you, Chris, for this update. It's a big, it's a big project. It's our biggest to date and, and we're really excited to walk this journey. In thinking about this past legislative session, and I mean, this might be the wrong question, but with the personal property and inventory taxes, is that changing because of the new policy? Or does the personal property then become real estate? I mean, it's...
Now, the bill that you're referring to is the one that provided an exemption to businesses for the first $125,000 of business personal property. They'll, they'll just get a very slight exemption on their business personal value. Like all, all, I think there's 4,500 businesses in town that'll get that and, but yeah, Graphic will have a, a small benefit in that as well.
But it will be minimal in comparison to the total amount of inventory that they'll have on, onsite.
Thank you. Because it's just on the first 125. Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say, Chris, thanks. I know that the city and the chamber worked hard on, in getting Graphic Packaging in. I mean, this is a giant elephant. Our whole city has about 23, 24 billion in value and this maybe is 1 billion all by itself. So as Mayor Portem Bearfield said, this is the biggest one in the history of the city. So I know there's a lot of moving parts to it. With the water line and utilities and the roadway and the adjacent businesses that are kind of coming in, Electrolyte, natural gas infrastructure, a rail spur, there's a lot of things going on here, but 190 really good jobs, great wages, like that 378 job multiplier also. And I visited Kalamazoo, not with the chamber, but I went up there on a different issue, but drove around that site and that is, it's huge and I know they're replicating the, the plant site here in Waco for 100, this is a 100-year-plus project and 100-year-plus investment in the city of Waco, which super excited about. And we're demonstrating that the payback period is four years with the incentives. So I mean, that everything looks like it lines up well. A lot of cranes out there, they're still working and if anybody ever drives kind of out there, you'll see all these cranes on the horizon, which to me, as an investment banker, is super great, great, a great view because you know, people are working out there and building. So a great addition to the city. Appreciate the chamber's work on it, Chris. Appreciate your work on it as well.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's support through this whole process. It's been great.
Thanks, Chris. Next item of business is work session 2025-421, City Manager Ford.
Yes, sir. We've got a discussion of police operations, including crime stats, strategies and updates. Chief Victorians is going to come up as well as a few members of our team to the table. That includes Commander Adam Brewer, Commander Virgil George, Commander Pedro Soto coming up to support chief in this presentation and obviously very timely since it's summertime and as we know, that tends to generate a few more calls for service and so look forward to the presentation from the team today. Chief?
Thank you so much, City Manager Ford. Good evening, mayor and council. Just one little correction, I'm here to support them. We have a, we're doing a different, we're going to present this, this in a different way on today. But thank you guys so much for the opportunity to come before you to present our strategic plan for violent crime this summer. As you always hear me say, we take a holistic approach to addressing crime and that includes prevention, intervention, apprehension and as well as education. Well, today, we're going to specifically focus on a couple of components of that holistic approach and that's going to be investigations and enforcement. But, so this afternoon, you're going to hear directly from the leaders of our command staff who lead the dedicated teams of our patrol, special victims and special investigations divisions. They represent the people who are actually out there on the ground doing the work, preventing the crime and responding swiftly when crime does occur. But before I introduce this team, I want to give you guys a crime picture of what's going on in Waco. Although we're going to talk a little bit about strategic response to violent crime that's happening over the summer, understand that crime is still at a historic low in the city of Waco. So we got our monthly report yesterday and what I saw in the monthly report was just tremendous. So before I start talking about that, I want to give you a little background. We have, we are transitioning from using Uniform Crime Report to NIBRIS, FBI NIBRIS, which is the National Incident-Based Reporting System. And so that we're reporting crime differently. So when you go online and look at our crime stats, they're going to be reported in Group A and Group B. Group A is actually the crime, Group B is the, our arrest, okay? And it's, it, you're going to hear a little language change too. You're going to hear crimes against persons, crimes against property and crimes against society, okay? So overall, in the city of Waco, year-to-date, we are down in the area of crimes against persons, 3% over last year and last year was a historic year. We are down 14% in crimes against property and that was a historic number last year as well. And then we're also down 10% in crimes against society. And we're talking about crimes against society, we're talking about prostitution, we're talking about narcotics investigations. And these represent, sometimes you're going to see a little red because these represent the proactive work that our officers are out there doing and sometimes that number looks a little higher, okay? So if you look at the, the graph here and it says shootings, I want to define what shootings are. Shootings include discharging firearms where somebody recklessly discharges a firearm in the city. It also includes deadly conduct, which is discharging a firearm in the direction of another person or at a vehicle or at a building or a home. It includes aggravated assaults where a shooting causes serious bodily injury to someone or where somebody uses or exhibits a weapon, where somebody exhibits a weapon during the course of an assault. And then of course, it includes murders when someone intentionally, knowingly or recklessly causes the death of someone else. So it is with the strategies that our commanders are about, about to present to you that we are being intentional about continuing to see the crime, crime trend going the right direction. So let me introduce to you Commanders Brewer, Commanders George and Commander Soto.
Thank you, chief. Good afternoon. It's a privilege to be able to present to y'all today. My name is Adam Brewer and I am the 2A Division Commander within our overall patrol command. And basically what that means is, is that me and my division work the hours of 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM. So we primarily cover those evening shift hours of the city. I know that this time is valuable, so I'm going to try to keep my remarks to patrol to three main points. So the first point that I'd like to point out from patrol is that we are attempting to do proactive strategies that we are assigning as directed patrols. Here's what a directed patrol is. A directed patrol is taking specific police resources and it's placing it in areas that have been identified by crime data to be able to help solve specific issues and problems in those areas. So we're very lucky at the police department to have some very dedicated crime analysts and they do a phenomenal job of telling us in patrol when and where these crimes are occurring. So that allows our patrol supervisors as well as our patrol officers to be more intentional in their daily patrol patterns when they're not working and I have a one call or a call for service. So there's several advantages to these directed patrols and this is going to be on the screen. The first one is area familiarization. Having a directed patrol allows these officers to know what is going on in their individual assigned areas. It also provides opportunities for community engagement, being able to drive into the area, get out of the car, go meet people, talk to people. And second, or third, it provides a visible deterrent to criminal activity. My second point for patrol is going to be calls for service. Calls for service is the, one of the primary functions that patrol does and operates in and we have three main objectives that we like to ensure that we're meeting when we get to these calls for service. The first one is first and foremost, it's, it's safety. We have to make sure that the public is safe when we get to these scenes. We want to get there quickly. We want to make sure that we're providing everybody with any life-saving measures and getting them any kind of medical help that they need as quickly as possible. Once we've established that, then we move into the initial investigation stage. And for us in patrol, that looks like gathering names, identifying victims, identifying possible suspects, witnesses, any cars that may have been involved, being able to collect physical data that's in the crime scene or physical evidence as well. And then application, we apply that. So as patrol officers, we have daily contact, daily routine in these areas. So we want to make sure as patrol that we're able to put those daily knowledge and daily relationships in those initial investigations to help out our investigative partners when they're following up on these cases. And lastly, team integration. So here's what I mean by team integration. On the patrol side, we want to make sure that we're having specific resources such as our K-9 unit and our traffic unit available to our investigative, investigative divisions in case they need those on an operation. We also want to make sure that we are participating and sharing in intelligence. So one of the things that we're doing is patrol supervisors are attending gun crime intelligence meetings and those are hosted by our Criminal Investigation Division. And what that does is on the patrol side, it gives us the most up-to-date information as to what's being discovered about these cases that we're working. So it really keeps us in the loop on the street. And lastly, just general support. If our investigative divisions need a couple of extra people to help them on a call, we'll be there. If they need a marked unit to help them with something, we'll be there, okay? I can say that's something that we do very, very well and with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Commander George so that he can talk to y'all about the Criminal Investigations Division.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Commander Virgil George. I have the honor of leading our department's Special Victims Division, which encompasses the Victim Services Unit, Family Violence Unit, Crimes Against Children's Unit and Special Crimes Unit. We here in the Waco Police Department pride ourselves on being a progressive and innovative police department. With that standard that we set for ourselves, our department is currently participating in the National Case Close Project. To give a brief summary, the National Case Close Project is a free federally funded program funded by the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the overall goal of the project is to aid police departments in improving their ability to investigate fatal and non-fatal shooting cases. When I use the term non-fatal shootings, I'm speaking about those cases where a person has been shot, injured but survived. The Waco Police Department, we were the 10th and final department selected to participate in this project. In this past March, the act, the National Case Close Project team actually visited the Waco Police Department to conduct numerous in-person interviews with multiple team members from our department who play a role in investigating gun-related crimes. They also conducted interviews with a few of our community partners and stakeholders to include a few victims from, who've been impacted by gun-related violence. With the informal initial information that we received from the National Case Close Project team, our department is taking proactive steps to implement improvements within our department, specifically within the Investigations Command. In past years, the, our non-fatal shooting investigations were investigated by another unit within our department, the Assault and Financial Crimes Unit. The decision was made to do a restructure within the Investigations Command to give additional personnel and resources to the Special Crimes Unit and give the, our non-fatal shootings the same amount of resources that we give our homicides units, our homicide cases. I'm going to back up a little bit. In addition to the, the informal or the in-person interviews, the National Case Close Project team is reviewing 80 actual investigations from the Waco Police Department. Forty of those investigations are non-fatal shootings and four of them are unfortunately homicide investigations. And with that information, they're going to provide us a, a report to give us some suggestions on where we can improve, but we've already taken steps on our own to, to improve. As I stated before, we're going to be prioritizing our non-fatal shooting investigations. The reason we're going to do that because a non-fatal shooting is, should be considered as a unsuccessful homicide and of course, we want to bring those numbers down. We will now have a detective respond on scene to those non-fatal shooting cases to assist patrol. We're going to continue to work diligently with our forensic teams to collect more forensic evidence. We're going to continue to utilize our robust National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, or NIBRIS, to help us and aid us in solving these cases, these gun crime cases. In addition to the restructure that our department is doing, we are beginning to hold weekly gun crime intelligence meetings within the department. The purpose of these meetings is to foster improved communication between the different sections within the department to include outside agencies who want to participate in our endeavors. As of today, our community has five homicide investigations. As you can see, we've made arrests in three of those investigations and we're continuing to work with our District Attorney's Office to bring those cases to, for prosecution. And we have investigative leads on the remaining two. The national average, closure average for homicides in the, nationally is about 50%. Statewide, that closure rate is about 62%. And in 2024, the Waco Police Department Special Crimes Unit had a closure rate on our homicide investigations at 90%. We pride ourselves on having that standard and maintaining and improving on the efforts that we're doing within our homicide investigations. Again, we're going to continue to prioritize our non-fatal shootings. That way we can have a positive impact on the overall number of homicides our community will experience. With that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Commander Pedro Soto, so he can speak further on the endeavors that we're taking. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Pedro Soto. I'm a commander with the Special Investigations Division. That division incorporates the Drug Enforcement Unit, Gang Unit, and Street Crimes. We also are part of the Texas Anti-Gang Center, more commonly referred to as the TAG Center. The TAG partners include the Waco Police Department, McClintock County Sheriff's Office, Texas Department of Public Safety, ATF, DEA, Homeland Security, the Lone Star Task Force, McClintock County's District Attorney's Office, Robinson Police Department, Corio County Sheriff's Office, Lacey Lakeview Police Department, and Bell County Sheriff's Office. Although they are not housed at the TAG, we also are partnered with the FBI and the U.S. Marshal Services. This multi-agency center brings together federal, state, and local agencies to share intelligence, conduct joint investigations, and effectively prosecute and disrupt violent crimes, particularly offenses tied to violent gangs. The significance of TAG lies in its ability to overcome jurisdictional boundaries. As we all know, offenders do not operate with regard for city limits. Through collaboration and shared resources, TAG enables law enforcement to investigate, apprehend offenders regardless of jurisdiction. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the City Council for its continued support of the TAG initiative. This important work would not be possible without your commitment and partnership. Thank you. This implementation is a proactive response to address violence. Acknowledging that summer violence is trending down, as shown in our previous graph, we want to ensure violent crime continues to decrease and maintain that decrease as we progress. Our goal is to continue to make Waco a safe community that our citizens, businesses, and community partners can thrive in. VCTF operations will occur in June and August 2025. This will include Street Crimes, DPS, the McClintock County Sheriff's Office, Gang and Drug Enforcement Units, along with Patrol Units. We will use intelligence-based enforcement through the use of crime maps and projective data to saturate an area. As we continue to address violent crime through targeted enforcement efforts, it's equally important that we avoid the perception or reality of overpolicing in our communities. I want to ensure the council that we are taking deliberate steps to balance proactive policing. We will use data to drive deployment, such as crime mapping to include recent shooting data, and intelligence to avoid blanket coverage. We will set clear objectives of the operation, such as known suspects recovering firearms and disrupting gang activity rather than general stops or broad sweeps. We will use problem-solving approaches that are short-term, focused, and proportional to the area. Our investigators work with the District Attorney's Office to ensure that offenders are being held accountable for their actions. This is reinforced through high bonds to keep violent offenders in jail. Our intelligence-based investigations are able to leverage both local, state, and federal resources to help solve violent crime and keep our gang members off the streets. We currently have a U.S. Marshals Task Force Officer that works with the Marshal Service to track down, arrest, and assist in prosecuting some of our most dangerous criminals. Recently, we joined the FBI Safe Streets Task Force to more effectively address gang and violent crime using federal resources. At the beginning of the summer, we filled open staffing positions within our Street Crimes Unit. Street Crimes is a uniformed unit, and is our discretionary unit not beholding the calls for service. They can be moved throughout the city to address the needs of the community, and this can keep our Patrol Officers available for calls for service. We have created a catalog of hybrid gangs to pass out to Patrol Command and other members of the department to assist with identifying both traditional and hybrid gang members. I will go into more detail regarding hybrid gang members later on in the presentation. The following graph shows May 1st through August 31st, 2022 through 2024, and breaks violent crime down into days of the week. These crimes include simple assault, aggravated assault, murder and non-negotiable manslaughter, aggravated robbery, and sexual assault. As shown in the graph, there is a noticeable dip in violent crime offenses during the middle of the week. When planning our efforts to address violent crime, we will use the data to concentrate resources on the higher crime periods, particularly Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. In this graph, you'll see violent crime incidents broken down by time of day. The times along the bottom are shown in military time. So for example, 1,400 hours corresponds to 2:00 PM. The data covers the same time period, May through August 2022 through 2024, and includes the same offenses. As the graph indicates, there's a noticeable increase in violent crime beginning around 1,500 hours, or 3:00 PM, and continuing until approximately 0100 hours, or 1:00 AM. This trend is valuable information in helping us schedule proactive units during peak hours to more effectively address and deter violent crime. The following graph is a heat map, and again, shows the same timeframe and the same offenses. This map displays clusters of reports related to shooting and violent crimes, highlighting some of the most concentrated areas of criminal activity. It serves as a valuable tool in helping us strategically deploy resources to the locations where they are most needed. Three of the last five homicides were connected to marijuana-related robberies, where suspects targeted individuals for their supply. Marijuana represents a unique challenge for law enforcement as enforcement decisions often become a cost-benefit analysis. Under current laws, possession of marijuana is typically considered a low-level offense, unless the quantity exceeds five pounds. Additionally, possession under this threshold is classified as a misdemeanor. For prosecution to proceed, the seized marijuana must be tested at an expense that is often cost-prohibitive. Given the evolving legal landscape surrounding marijuana and the widespread availability of low-level THC products through smoke shops, prosecution for minor marijuana offenses has become increasingly rare. As a result, local gangs have calculated that the financial gain from selling marijuana outweighs the risk of facing minimal legal consequences, if any. Youth offenders present a unique challenge as well, particularly within the juvenile justice system, which prioritizes diversion over prosecution. Many of our local hybrid gangs are primarily composed of juveniles. Traditional gangs such as the Bloods and Crips often exploit this system by directing hybrid gang members to carry out violent crimes. Knowing these individuals are less likely to have criminal records and are less likely to face severe sentencing. Hybrid gangs differ from traditional gangs in that they lack formal leadership, structure, and accountability. In traditional gangs, violent criminal activity typically requires approval from leadership. And law enforcement can often engage directly with gang leaders to de-escalate tensions or address acts of violence. Hybrid gangs, on the other hand, operate without such hierarchy or control. Members frequently commit violent acts independently without oversight or sanction from higher-ranking individuals. Even when a more senior member attempts to intervene or correct the behavior of low-ranking members, there is no obligation to comply. And in many cases, individuals simply ignore the guidance, switch allegiances to rival gangs if they agree with what's being said. This is dangerous. This lack of structure and loyalty makes hybrid gangs especially unpredictable. They are not territory-based. They lack formal leadership and structure, and often claim multiple affiliations. Their fluidity and reliance on juvenile offenders makes them particularly difficult to track and dismantle. In 2021, the Police Department, in coordination with the DA's office, made significant progress in disrupting a major hybrid gang. The imposition of substantial sentences on key members successfully slowed the group's growth and reduced its operational impact. However, this disruption created space for another organization to rise in prominence closely aligned with the previous group. This emerging group is now considered the largest hybrid gang in the area, with its primary rival ranking second in terms of numbers. The Special Investigation Unit, or Division, is actively working to address the rise of hybrid gangs through targeted enforcement, intelligence gathering, and inter-agency collaboration. Our focus is on identifying key members, disrupting criminal activity, and preventing recruitment, particularly among juveniles. These efforts are part of a broader strategy to reduce gang-related violence and restore community safety. I would now like to bring your attention to the impact of our investigations along with our accomplishments. Operation Real Justice in April 2025 was concluded with a 10-month investigation that was led by the Waco PD's Drug Enforcement Unit and assisted by the FBI, DEA, McClintock County Sheriff's Office, and Texas DPS. The narcotics investigation uncovered a multi-jurisdictional heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamine ring that ranged from Dallas-Fort Worth, Central Texas, Austin, Houston, and San Antonio. During the investigation, 24 targets were arrested: cocaine, black tar heroin, methamphetamine, marijuana, along with multiple pills containing fentanyl, were seized. Twelve firearms were also recovered. Two of them were found to be stolen. Additionally, 16,000 in counterfeit currency was seized. In May of 2025, Operation Sour Patch was concluded, a Waco TAG investigation that led to the arrest of 11 members of the Bandido Motorcycle Gang. 11 search warrants were executed across six counties. The 11 targeted gang members were charged with engaging in organized criminal activity, aggravated robbery, and over 100 pieces of evidence were collected. The impact that these investigations have created and continue to have a ripple effect that have driven down violent crime. The accomplishments that we have here at the Waco Police Department include, currently, we have the reigning Texas Narcotics Investigator of the Year. She is an active and productive member of our Drug Enforcement Unit. Two of our gang investigators have received the Frederick Milton Thrasher Award. The award is presented by the National Gang Crime Research Center to recognize excellence in gang research and related fields. This prestigious award honors individuals who have made significant advancements in understanding gang-related issues through their exceptional work. Thrasher Award recipients are celebrated as leading experts in their field with their invaluable contributions to research and training being acknowledged. A new addition to the TAG Center is the Waco ISD Police Department, whose partnership will be instrumental in addressing juvenile crime and identifying gang-involved youth. I cannot overemphasize the importance of their involvement. Having a direct connection to our schools strengthens early intervention and intelligence efforts. I would like to sincerely thank Waco ISD Superintendent Dr. Tiffany Spicer and Waco ISD Police Chief Craig Goodman for their leadership, support, and commitment to this important initiative. Our city and police department are receiving state and national recognition and are being sought out for our knowledge and expertise. We have been invited to Chicago to teach at the National Gang Crime Research Center Conference. One investigator was just recently elected to be Regional Director for the Texas Narcotics Officers Association. I am proud of the accomplishments of our organization and the resources that we can bring to bear against a violent crime in our community. Thank you for your time. And now I'd like to turn this over to Chief Victorian.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So council, as you've heard, we are being intentional about preventing and responding to violent crime through proactive engagement, proactive prevention, internal assessments, as well as enforcement. Just keep in mind that these overall effects, or they're going to, these overall efforts are going to continue to be supported by our Community Services Division with our community outreach, with our neighborhood engagement, and also with our safe team. Again, I just want to piggyback off of Commander Soto's sentiments to thank you guys for allowing us to participate in the TAG and for your support with the TAG. We are one of nine TAG centers in the state of Texas, and we are so very proud of that. We also want to thank our community partners, public safety partners. But as you've heard me say many times before, public safety is not just a police responsibility. It takes each and every person in our community. It takes our faith leaders. It takes our educators. It takes our youth organizations and all of our residents to play a role in helping us to keep crime trending in the right direction. And so my call to everyone today is to make sure that we're staying informed. Follow us all, follow us on social media. Make sure you're watching the news. Make sure you speak up. If you see something, make sure you say something. Mentor a young person. Provide a job for a young person. Provide enrichment opportunities for a young person. And always report suspicious activities and get involved in your community and your neighborhood programs. We need to make sure that we're building relationships in our communities that help interrupt the cycle of violence before it even starts. So everyone's voice is important. And together, we will continue to create a safer, more connected Waco. So thank you once again, council, for your continued support. And I want to thank these commanders for their leadership and just highlighting the excellent work of their teams. Thank you. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the commanders or chief?
Just encouragement that y'all are doing a great job and loving to see the direction and trajectory of these numbers. I think this is going to give our residents a good sense of peace of mind and confidence in our Police Department. So thank y'all so much for all you do and for all the officers that work for you and your staff as well.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, commanders, for this presentation. I know it's that time of year, and when activities in violent and non-violent crimes are increased, just because there's more time. And this is probably a hard season for you all, so I appreciate everything that you do, period. Thank you all for coming and taking the time to help us dissect this information. Councilmember Borderwood is correct. I mean, we have consistently decreased our numbers in shootings and violent crimes and non-violent crimes for the, I mean, let's go the past five years, it's more than that. But, and that is an attest, a testament to you all, to our community partners that stand up with us, to our residents standing up. I think it's a great idea for Waco ISD to participate in TAG. They are boots on the ground. My husband's an educator, and you know, you, the sad news is when you're watching the news and you see a crime committed, and he's like, oh, that was one of my students. So, you know, having them engaged is going to kind of be a, just a bell ringer because they know what it is, because they see it every day. So I commend you all for that. I am truly disturbed by the concept of a hybrid gang because I'm like, it doesn't make any sense to me because when you think of gang mentality, there is structure, there is culture, there are rules, right? And so these folks is just popping left to right, doing whatever, that is concerning for me. So I'm appreciative of the fact that you all are engaged in national organizations that will allow you to get resources and glean knowledge from police departments all over the country because I don't even know what to do with that right now.
I've had some hybrid church members at my church. You know what I mean? Where it's just not as, quite as committed as they used to be.
Same seat every Sunday. But, and the fact that you all are one of nine, I mean, you know, Texas is its own country. And the fact that you are one of nine, one of nine TAG units speaks volumes for our community, our departments, but certainly our position in this state regarding public safety. Lastly, I don't remember the name, so I'm sorry. There was a summit that you all were doing for the residents? A safety summit?
We did the crime prevention summit.
Crime Prevention Summit, yes.
And last year, we did a different version of that. Yeah, we'll have to rework that. Participation was, yeah. Yeah, so we have to come up with another strategy to make sure people are getting involved So we have to come up with another strategy to make sure people are getting involved because we're teaching you how to reduce your own victim.
Correct, and I think that it was incredible. I, I, I will say for me in District One, just effective in, because knowledge is power. How we, you know, what Neighborhood Watch does when we're watching the backs of our neighbors means a lot. You know, what your Ring camera can do to prevent crime, I mean, what those things mean. So, you know, however I can help re-energize that program, I would like to do that because I think it's important. I think it's like anything that we have that's new, you kind of have to keep doing it in order for the people to be like, oh, this is for me, and oh, this is good information, and oh, I would not have known that but for. So I think it's something, I hope you don't abandon it, and however I can help, I can't speak for my, I'm sure my council members feel the same way, but however we can help, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I say this every time we get a presentation from PD, but it remains true every time, and it's that there are so many city councils across the state and the nation that have a hard time connecting with PD or being broadly supportive of their efforts, and I'm so thankful that we in Waco don't have to worry about any of the difficulties that come from that because you guys have such a culture of, I mean, I'm looking at transparency as I'm looking at the tree thing, but, but truly, your transparency, your community focus, and your holistic approach to preventing crime in our city goes such a long way with our residents, and I know that you guys see that on your end as well, and it makes our jobs a lot easier when we are having to work on, you know, tighter budgets and, and we're continuing to fund police in a way that, that makes a job at Waco PD enticing for people to be here. So I really appreciate your efforts in the ways that not only it keeps us safer individually and, and our constituents as well, but it, it does a lot of the work for us on the front end. When, you know, I go to neighborhood association meetings and in every single one of them, we have a representative there from PD, and that speaks volumes to your commitment to community and, and allows for the folks in our neighborhoods to feel connected as well. So with that being said, I do, I just want to highlight a couple of things here. I love, I should say, I'll speak broadly again because I could talk about this for a while, but just the, the efforts from, from each of you to continue to look for areas to improve and not be complacent with the fact that we're coming off of a record year for, for lows across the board in terms of crime. But hey, what are we doing with team integration? Are we using the best software for tracking and reporting? How are we coming together across departments to make sure that we're, we're preventing this? So again, singing your praises here, you don't need any more of it, but, but I really appreciate all the hard work that goes into the work you guys do in the field, and then also just, you know, frankly, presenting because I know that it's not your day job to sit at a desk and present to a city council. So, so thank you guys for the time and effort put into that.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you for the fine work you're doing. I don't know a lot about policing, but it would seem intuitive that to get good results, you would have to be working well with the community, and I think that says a lot about the job you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for the great job you're doing and just the trust you're building in the community. I always shout out Officer Anita Gomez because she's there south Waco, and she's a celebrity. Every time she walks into our school, parents are taking selfies with her, and so they just, so thank you for building that trust.
Yeah, thank you. I'll just echo what everybody said. Commanders Brewer, George, and Soto, I really appreciate, appreciate you coming for council, and it's always good to see this, this leadership. Very happy to hear crimes against persons, property, and society are lower across the board, and every year when I hear that, it's like, it's amazing. I think the lowest in 25 years, 30 years, I just keep wanting to add, add to that because I think it's the lowest on record, I'll say that, and it's you guys that have, that have made that happen, and, and your teams and the Blue Family. So much appreciated. Commander Brewer, you were talking about community engagement and visible deterrents, so you guys are doing great there, particularly that community engagement where the relational policing thing I think is really working. You guys are very intentional about it and very visible about it, and I appreciate that. Commander George, the, the closure and homicide rates being almost double the National Library, it's, it's amazing, and great, great work there. Commander Soto, the, the anti-gang work you're doing, and really the data, the data that you went over, I like, I like how this is just high-level stuff, but I mean, as you guys dig into the data and figure out what, where, when, it looks like a very safe time to be out, is it six o'clock in the morning on Thursday?
Amazing. I'm like, what's happening at six AM?
I love that. And again, just as, as you think about it, where, where does my patrol need to be at some certain part of the city at what time? It's just, I'm, I'm very happy that you're, you have great strategy and across the board, your strategy is great, your tactics are great, and your results are fantastic. Again, I appreciate your leadership, Chief, Chief Victorian. I, I talk highly about you all the time. I'm gonna talk about your commanders now.
Yes, sir, please do.
Great, I appreciate your leadership. And really, I'm, I'm just gonna close my comments with, you guys are just a real source of pride, the Blue Family here in Waco, a source of pride for me, and as I give my mayor's speech, and Josh, he saw mine this morning, and he was with me, my first slide is always public safety, you know? Police are doing great, the return on investment is so great, so I brag on you guys all the time, and invariably, and I think it happened this morning too, when I talk about the crime rate being so low, I get stopped with an applause. People are applauding, not me, but y'all, and, and I feel good, I, I get some residual good feel out of it, but again, I appreciate all the work you do, and I want, it may be a bit unorthodox, but I'd like to applaud you guys for your, your work, I appreciate you. So again, thank you, and appreciate the, the presentation, fantastic.
Thank you all very much.
City Manager Ford, are we on schedule? Where do you want to go?
We're within five minutes of schedule, so we're doing really well. We've got, next up, Galen Price coming up, Work Session 422, Discussion of Funding Recommendations for our CDBG and Home Programs. We're gonna ask Galen to, I think, I think Deidre might already queue him in, we're gonna ask him to cover just a portion of the slides that have been prepared, particularly the funding recommendations, as well as going to cover the allocation history and the effect of inflation on our allocations. But there are other slides in the packet that the public can view and get more information on as well. Galen, thanks for adjusting your slides for me today, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager. And so we'll start off with diving into a history of our allocations. As you can see, here's a slide that shows the allocations over our last five years. Then the next slide gets into the effects of inflation on our allocations. Now, on this slide, you'll see the blue bar reflects the amount of inflation adjusted for the fiscal year 21 award. The black bar reflects the actual amount received for the respective year, with the red bar showing the loss of funding based on the inflation and purchasing power for each subsequent year. Now, as you can see, the cumulative effect of these lost of impact, the impact of the loss of dollars includes 18 to 20 rehabs not being able to be funded, 187 roofs unable to be repaired, and 12 to 14 homes not having the ability to be constructed for low to moderate income households. So with CDBG, can be used for a variety of different activities. There are limitations on certain spending categories, which there's a 20% on our administrative cap, as well as a 15% on our public services cap. Now, the public service category is a category in which we receive the majority of our requests for funding. Now, CDBG funds must be used to meet a national objective, which could be the benefit to low, moderate-income persons, the elimination of slum of light, or to meet an urgent community need. Now, those activities that can be used to meet those goals include homeowner rehab, down payment assistance, as well as public services. So I'll jump right on into our recommendations. On the column to your right is our updated recommendations based on our allocations. And as you can see with this slide, there's a slight increase in the home rehabilitation program that's being recommended because we did receive a slight increase in our CDBG annual allocation. So we have recommended that, that slight increase be allocated towards our home rehabilitation In addition to our housing category, we did receive a request from Neighbor Works for the use of some program income dollars from loans initially generated through CDBG. They would like to use these funds for the purchase of land to develop a single-family mixed-income development. Now, they would use CHODO funding if awarded for the construction of the affordable homes within this development. Now, this proposal does align with the goals of the city as far as developing housing for all residents, as well as developing vacant parcels of land within the city. Here we have our administration recommended funding, which we are recommending slightly less than the 20% that is allocated, allowed under our allocation. And here we're jumping into our public service category. We did receive seven requests, and we are recommending funding for six of those requests. I want to highlight the request from Guama, which would be for the purchase of supplies and materials for the construction of a tiny home in relation in support of the Creekside Village project. And this slide shows the use of funds for the recommended allocations under the public services.
So Galen, on that one, the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy is gonna build one of the tiny homes at the Creekside Village?
Yes, sir, that is correct. That would be done as, as a class project.
Oh, that's really cool. Thanks.
Next, I will jump into our Home Investment Partnerships Program grant. These are funds that are used for the construction of affordable housing opportunities for low-income households. Now, as with CDBG, there are restrictions under this category where we are capped at 10% of the funds being used on our administration activities, as well as a minimum of 15% must be set aside for our community housing development organization. Now, activities eligible under the home grant include down payment and closing cost assistance, new construction, as well as tenant-based rental assistance. And so under this category, we are recommending slight decreases in the request for funding because we did receive a slight decrease in our annual allocation on our home grant. Now, the funding recommendation for the tenant-based rental assistance is at 174, 193, based on current funding allocated for our tenant-based rental assistance that is anticipated to carry over approximately $100,000 for that program into the program year of '25. So tonight, we will be holding our first public hearing in relation to our recommended allocations. In addition, the comment period begins today and will end on July 17th. At our August 5th council meeting, we will be, bring back a second public hearing, as well as a resolution for your consideration for the adoption of the Annual Action Plan. That plan is due to HUD by August 16th. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Director Price? I don't have any. Galen, you always do such a great job of getting all this organized, and we have limited dollars in CDBG and Home, and you always find a place to put it, and, and our results there, and our return has always been great, and I appreciate your efforts on, on this as always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bradley, do we have time for 423?
One left. I think Cody thought he was gonna get, get out of it today. What do y'all think? No, we've got time for Mr. Cody.
Come on down, Cody.
Our director of, oh, no, not, I can't say director of solid waste anymore, can I? Wow. Yeah, Cody now has an empire, it's not just solid waste, but he is gonna be talking to us today mainly on a solid waste topic. So Cody's here today to present on our landfill gas-to-energy agreement with Verity Energy LLC. It is on your agenda this evening, and appreciate Cody and the team's leadership getting this in front of the council. It's a, an agreement that'll bring us some resources, as well as kind of indicates our efforts to support green energy and technology as well. So I'll turn the mic over to Cody, and I think we're gonna try and end this in about 20 minutes total, and get you to a break and executive session by 5:30. Cody?
All right, thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to present this update on the landfill gas-to-energy agreement with Verity. Cody Patel, Director of Public Works. Let's say we're gonna be going over the back, background of landfill gas generation, kind of how it happens, and where we're at with the existing landfill, overview of the project, selected developer details, financial and environmental benefits, and then project timeline. So feel free to jump in with any questions during the process. All right, so the existing landfill, we do generate landfill gas, which is a combination of methane and carbon dioxide and some other compounds, and this is generated as well as decomposes underground. We are required to capture and process that gas by federal and state regulations, and right now we do that with a collection system with piping and pumps that goes to a flare system that is combust that methane and processes that to keep us in compliance. Here's an overall process of how, how the gas is processed with our flare, and then eventually into renewable natural gas, RNG, collected at the curb, goes to the landfill disposed of. Eventually, after a few years, it generates that methane or that landfill gas, it's processed, captured and processed. Right now, it's processed through a flare system. Ultimately, it's going to be a, a, a gas, gas processing facility that will refine this methane and turn it into a renewable natural gas that will then be injected into a pipeline to somebody like Atmos, and will get royalties off of those revenues from that vendor. So just briefly, I think it's some good information to have how landfill gas is generated, but really the, the short story of this is it takes multiple years from trash coming to the landfill until it ultimately starts to generate a landfill, to landfill gas. That's where we're at with, and then, and then once you start generating that landfill gas, you do that throughout the life of the landfill, and then once you stop that operation, the landfill gas curve starts to decline over time. This is where we're at with the existing landfill. Where we're at with the new landfill is we won't see that landfill gas start to develop until a few years after we start operations. So this project specifically is just for the gas rights at the existing landfill, not for the new landfill. All right, so starting off the project, we brought on HDR engineers to help us through the RFP phase, and then brought on Lloyd Gosling. They also helped support the permitting of the new landfill and transfer station, so they helped provide some legal guidance to give us sort of the best value, is what we feel. So on the agenda tonight, we have Resolution 2025-459 for your consideration for a contract with Verity Energy to develop and operate an RNG facility at the existing landfill. They will manage our existing collection system, as well as our flare, and ultimately be responsible for any expansion. They'll have to develop a gas processing facility onsite to process the landfill gas and convert it to RNG, and ultimately inject that RNG into pipeline for sale. Just as a reminder, this is just for gas rights at the existing landfill. We will look at doing a similar project to like this at the new landfill in at least five years until we start generating that landfill gas.
So I'll, I'll, I'll hold my comments at the end, I'll ask you on the fly here. Is that, is this funded, this building and everything funded by the city or by Verity?
So all the improvements will be funded by Verity, and so this is what a, one gas processing facility looks like. Theirs will be, will be different than this. The majority of it will be outdoor processing, and they'll have a much smaller office facility.
Got it, thanks, Cody.
So here, just for reference, is the landfill. You can see where the project site's gonna be at the top of the slide here. And so this is next to a decommissioned gas processing facility. You can see the footprint that we're looking at using, or Verity's looking at using. That blue area is the outdoor processing area with that, that small orange box is the, the office space that they're looking at utilizing for their control room, and it will be one to two-person staff. All right, so Verity Energy, so we have four proposals. They were leaps and bounds above on the other, the other ones. They, they are national leader in this industry, they've shown that they can do this, they've done it in successful projects at other landfills. They have a strong financial background, which is really critical, as this is a high, has some high volatility in this market. And so really, they were selected because they had the best financial model, and the process that they were proposing for treating the gas was really in line with what we were looking for as well. So the financial impacts, environmental impacts, so for financial impacts, there, this is, these two sections are really what benefits the city of Waco here. So Verity Energy will be responsible for expansion of landfill gas system in the future. We had that budgeted in our five-year CIP, so that helps us avoid a five-year, a $5 million investment in the expansion of the gas system, as well as we have an annual operations and maintenance funding responsibility. It's about $110,000 a year, so that funding responsibility is going to shift to Verity after we go into this contract as well. So we're reducing expenses, and then we're adding some revenue. So we'll receive a royalty based on their gross revenue. It's gonna, there's a tiered structure, there's three different tiers, it goes from 6% to 15%, with an average of 6.42% over the 20-year initial term. There is a max 15%, and that's really during optimal market conditions, who may hit it every now and then, but it, it's really not what we'll be getting to. We're looking at the first year revenue to be about $887,000 a year, and it's gonna taper off as our, our gas curve starts to decline, as the waste stops coming in, with an overall $10.8 million of, over the 20-year period. And their financial proposal was about double of the next proposal we got. So these funds will go to the solid waste fund, and they're gonna support the cost of closure. And we also, per a settlement agreement with a previous developer, will have to share 50% of our revenue through 2026. So this information, the graph on the left, the table on the right, that's the same information. Your blue line is the same as the estimated revenue to the city. You can see that there's a 35% plus or minus, and that's really to highlight that there's just a high volatility in this market. It's based on fluctuating environmental credits, and then definitely has some impacts from regulatory conditions as well. We're looking at, again, the six point, on the table on the right, a 6.4% royalty projected annually, with about a little over half a million dollar of revenue over the 20-year term, and then on that far right, we have the equivalent residential rate impact. So over the 20-year term, we anticipate it has about 88 cents impact on our residential So for environmental impacts, this helps us reduce our emissions significantly. Right now, the process we have is in compliance, it's really, it is considered state-of-the-art, but now we are... um, but now we are flaring off methane, and it's, and it's putting out carbon dioxide. Going forward, we'll be able to capture that gas, it'll be processed, and it'll be piped, so the, the emissions are going to be significantly less than what we have now. Um, so what we're doing now is good, this is going to be better. Uh, it really supports a key strategic initiative we have, uh, with supporting sustainability, and it reduces our environmental costs by reducing that O&amp;M cost of our, um, funding responsibilities for operational maintenance of the landfill gas system. Our project timeline, um, today we are, uh, having a contract on the agenda for consideration. It is a final contract, the vendor has already signed it, um, so pending council approval today, we will send it for final execution, and then look to issue a notice proceed pretty quickly. We anticipate the, uh, planning, design, construction, and ultimate commission of this taking about 18 months, and we go operational towards the end of 2026. All right, so next steps, council approval, we get the contract executed, issue a notice proceed. Uh, the developer has already started, uh, planning and designing, as well as permitting, they've been working closely with Clint and his team, uh, they're very appreciative of them being responsive, uh, and then soon get into construction and ultimately get, get operational. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments you may have.
Briefly, Cody, just to kind of summarize, big picture, what this does is, this is, we enter into a contact, a contract with Verity, they build out the infrastructure for essentially harvesting this gas at our landfill. That is very good for the environment, um, and helps fulfill our obligations, um, and all, and then in turn, we get a percentage of the value of what they harvest in terms of the gas, or what they capture. Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Sounds good to me.
Cody, when figuring out the finances on it, um, and you may have said this, and I may have missed it, so, we get a percentage of, but it's of a variable price, right? I mean, what, depending on what RNG is selling for at any given time, so how, in building the model, how did y'all figure out what price to use?
So, H, H.
Does that question make sense?
Yeah, yeah, the HDR, uh, it really helped us build out the pricing, they, they're very in tune with what the RNG credits go for. Um, I, I don't know a lot.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not looking for that level of detail.
But, um, they took an average of what we, historical average to build out a model. Um, so Verity actually proposed a financial model, and we had our, our consultant HDR come back and give us an apples-to-apples comparison, um, from all the other vendors, and so that's what we're actually showing, because Verity's was actually a lot more aggressive, we felt this was a more conservative look at it, so, um, taking really historical RNG cell and projecting out from the flows that we think we'll get.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Um, good prezo, uh, Cody, appreciated, uh, as we close that 948A, which we'll, we'll start closing it down in first quarter, uh, first quarter of 2026, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, and then start a reclamation process after that. Um, is ultimately, this is like hauled off in a tanker, truck, kind of a deal, or how does it? I'm, I'm, these are curiosity questions more than anything.
No, sorry, it's, uh, so it'll be processed on site.
I had the same question.
It'll be processed on site, and then a, a pipeline will be built into, uh, to a Atmos injection point, which is actually right outside of our gate at the existing landfill, very convenient.
Okay.
But yeah, it'll be a pipeline system, no trucking.
Got it. The other, no cost to the city on this one, and Verity seems like a good, 30 other projects, good capital, experience, so it sounds like you picked the right person. Uh, in the contract, is there any kind of clawbacks to the city, or guaranteed minimums, or most importantly, obligations for Verity to perform? In other words, do they have to have, I would hope that within, whatever, two years, they'd have the facility built and start the process, or, I just, I just want to make sure we're not sitting there with a contract, and we look up in 10 years and nobody's done, not done anything.
Yeah, so there is, um, ten, yes, for all of that. Um, there is a term in the agreement that says they have to be commercially operational by so many months after execution.
Great.
Um, and then, once we get into operation, um, one, they have an opt-out if they are, if it's not financially feasible, because we don't want them sitting out there and doing nothing. Um, we also have a minimum payment clause, based on a 12-month rolling average, basically as, it's, it's an incentive to, um, if they're not financed, if they're not, if it's not financially feasible for them, to get out of the contract, um, because we, again, we don't want them sitting out there. So we do have some protections built into the agreement, um, to, to, throughout the life of it.
Is there infrastructure that they need to build into that? I mean, do they have to like drill pipes and whatever in, into the landfill itself, or does it just come blown out of, or is that pipe system already there?
So, some of the pipe system's already there, um, and we were going to be required to expand the pipe system across the landfill, now they're going to take on that capital investment, um, so that, that's that $5 million we mentioned.
Great. Okay, that's all I had. Cody, great presentation, this looks like a winner all the way around, appreciate it. City Manager Ford, are we?
That concludes our, uh, epic run of work sessions, and I'll turn it back to you.
That was great, that was fantastic. Um, okay, we're going to go on to the last item, which is the council request for scheduling of future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items? Uh, there being no request for future agenda items, we will now recess the work session and reconvene the regular session for executive session, as read into the record by Assistant City Secretary at 517, Mandy.
Notice hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Two, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And three, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. A, complaint of the city of Waco against Prairie Hill Water Supply Corporation, PUC Docket Number 56829, SOAH, Docket Number 473-25-08499, before the State Office of Administrative Hearings, impossible actions regarding, one, authority to settle the matter, and, two, increasing the outside council costs, which were previously approved by Resolution Number 2025-181, by up to $100,000 for a new total amount, not to exceed $225,000. We are now in executive session.